Order. And first, we will have Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little bit. End of the day. Now, also, open with congratulations, chiefs.
Yay!
It's official. It's back-to-back.
Three peters on.
Okay. Good evening, and I will go through procedures real quick. If you want to speak for a case or against a case, if somebody's already talked about something, just agree with them rather than go over the same thing and to save us time. And we are listening and we take notes, so that will be helpful. All those who wish to speak or think they would like to speak, will you stand up and be sworn in? Raise your right hand. Yeah, everybody who even thinks they might want to speak might as well just get sworn in. Saves everybody time. Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Okay. Before we begin, let's do roll. Roll call.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Wiley.
Here.
Or Heather Wiley. Commissioner L. Wiley.
Here.
Commissioner Dan O'Neal.
Present.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes, here. Thank you. Okay, first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda, and I understand we have an issue with the minutes.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
There, we did not have Virginia listed as present at the last meeting, so we need to make that adjustment to the minutes.
Okay. Okay, was there anything else anybody saw on that?
You mean on the minutes?
Yeah, on the minutes, yes. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to pull or postpone consideration of case 24-310-01, preliminary plat Little Blue Parkway and Truman Road, as well as case 24-323102, preliminary plat Little Blue Parkway and Highway, Missouri Highway 78.
Okay.
To a later date. Next meeting.
So...
Next meeting?
We're going to do two different votes. So first, we'll pull it from the consent agenda.
Request to pull it from the consent agenda.
So first, we will deal with the minutes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda of minutes?
Is there a second?
I'll second that. The minutes has amended.
Yes, amended, yes.
And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. The minutes have passed with the adjustment of that Virginia was actually present. And I might have done this backwards, Counselor, but now there was a motion to pull...
No, he just asked to pull them. There's no... I'm thinking about motion on it.
Yeah.
He just asked to pull them. Now, he's got to ask.
Now, we have motion.
Yeah.
Now, I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to pull case 24-310-01, preliminary plat Little Blue Parkway and Truman Road from the consent agenda.
No, we already pulled. We already... Sorry, check it out.
Well, we have to vote on it. Is there a second?
Okay. Let's vote on it. Second.
So, Ashbaugh made the motion. Commissioner Nesbit will second. Because we're pulling the case, so we have to vote pulling the case, right?
Yeah, we should have done that before we fix the minutes.
I know.
We need it backward.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm a little confused as to the motion. Would you please repeat it?
The motion is to pull the case number two and number three from the consent agenda and consider them separately. You're welcome. And I did those out of order, so...
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
And Commissioner O'Neal and Chairman McLean.
Yes. Okay. So do you, staff, do you want to speak to North Point needs time on these and is asking for a continuance? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So for case number two and number three, they're asking for a continuance. Do you have a date that they'll be continuing to?
The next meeting.
Twenty-seventh, February 27th.
You'll make the motion? You want me to? Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we postpone case 24-310-01, and I think we've got to do them all at a time to the February 27th meeting.
We can do them together, correct?
You can both.
Do we need to separate them and do them one at a time, or can we continue both at the same time?
The two cases you're continuing on the consent agenda, I do them separately since they're not.
Okay. So case, the motion was for case number 24-310-01.
Okay.
To continue that to February 27th.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-310-01 has been continued to February 27th.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we continue case 24-310-02 to the February 27th meeting.
I second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-310-02 has been continued to February 27th. Okay. First one of our public hearings is case number 24-100-07, rezoning of 210 East College Street. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
I believe it's actually the 24-100-03, the rezoning to Dollar General for the...
Do you want to take a vote on this, or...
Okay, we're good for the 24-100-03, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. So this is case 24-100-03, the rezoning to C2, General Commercial for Dollar General. What is proposed to be a Dollar General? The applicant is Capital Growth Buckhalter, and the action is to rezone to C2 General Commercial from C2 General Commercial and R6 Single Family Residential. And I'll just point out on the slide, you can see this is kind of a triangle-shaped property along 40 Highway on the western side of the city. Here's a map that shows the property in question, as well as the surrounding properties that were notified. The lighter area is the 180-foot, 185-foot buffer area that receives the notices in Here's an aerial photograph of the area. You can see that it's currently just a vacant lot with no structure on it. So here's the zoning map. Here's why it needs to be rezoned. It's currently got mixed zoning with C2 and R6, and for the development to move forward, it needs to have, be entirely zoned C2 General Commercial. So for the proposal, the applicant seeks to have this property rezoned so that the property is entirely C2 General Commercial. This will allow the property to be developed and a Dollar General store to be built on the property. Okay, the property history. This property has a long and detailed history. It was the location of the Thompson Plantation House until April of 2021. Between 1849 and 1855, Benjamin Franklin Thompson had the home built from locally-sourced materials for his 300-acre plantation. The house originally faced north, but was moved to face US Highway 40 in 1935. In 1937, the current property boundaries were established when the East Hollywood subdivision was platted. The property to be rezoned includes lots 150 and 151 of the East Hollywood plat. In 1965, the house on the property opened as a Mexican restaurant called Los Playas and operated for over 30 years. After the restaurant had closed, the property had been sold. The structure and the property had remained vacant for many years. After a series of fires had damaged the building, the City of Independence determined the building had become a dangerous structure. On April 20th of 2021, the building was demolished. The property has remained a vacant lot since. Continuing the property history regarding the zoning, the history of the property has been mostly, the zoning, regarding zoning, the history of the property has been mostly stagnant with only nominal changes throughout the last six decades. In 1965, when the city introduced zoning, many generalities were made that did not take in the existing property boundaries into account. Generally, areas within 250, or sorry, 200 feet of highways or major arterial streets were zoned as commercial. Areas beyond that were zoned, some type of residential zoning. The first zoning designations for the property were C3 Commercial and R1 Residential. In 1980, the zoning was updated to C2 General Commercial and R1B Single Family Residential. Finally, in 2009, with the adoption of the current version of the UDO, the commercial zoning remained C2, and the residential zoning was updated to R6 Single Family Residential. The physical characteristics of the property. The property abuts US Highway 40 to the south and 36th Street along the north and west. Since the demolition of the structure in 2021, the property has been a vacant lot. Most of the property is grass, however, a circle drive remains on the property. Characteristics of the area. The surrounding area has a variety of uses. South of the property across Highway 40 is a motel, a tavern, and a couple of liquor stores, a small strip office, a small strip of office spaces, and a home health business lie to the west. An older apartment complex sits to the north of the property across 36th Street. And lastly, to the east of the property is a small, single-story motel. Further east are several single-family homes, a vacant lot, and an automotive repair business. The surrounding area is almost entirely comprised of single-family homes of similar... Sorry, that was from the previous slide that I did not delete. Regarding the analysis, the consistency with the strategic plan. For any new commercial development to take place on this property, rezoning it will be required. Rezoning this property to accommodate new development is in line with the goals and objective of the strategic plan. The plan outlines goals to reduce blight and improve the visual appearance of the community. Developing this property will move the city forward with these goals in this part of the city. Further, by developing the property, new businesses may be encouraged to further develop this portion of the Highway 40 corridor. The comprehensive plan guiding land use principles. The comprehensive plan envisions the future land use of this property and surrounding area to be residential neighborhoods. The request to rezone the entirety of the property to C2 is not compatible with the proposed land use for residential neighborhoods. However, one of the guiding land use principles outlined in the plan is to foster redevelopment opportunities within the city to revitalize unused or underused property. Given that this property has been vacant for many years, even prior to the destruction of the structure, this property can be considered unused or underused property. While the comprehensive plan may envision the future land use to be residential, the property is unlikely to be developed for residential uses. A commercial development is a preferable alternative to a vacant lot. Regarding zoning. Section 1430102C of the UDO outlines the purpose of Independence C2 General Commercial zoning districts by stating that they primarily intend to accommodate community and region-serving retail sales and service uses. If rezoned, the property would be congruent with the neighboring properties along 40 Historic and archaeological sites. While the former home that existed on the site may have been a historic building, it was never designated as such by the City of Independence, nor was it on the National Register of Historic Places. Much of the historic significance of the site was lost when the building was demolished in 2021. Public utilities. All utilities are present in the adjacent rights-of-way. And for CIP investments, there are currently no CMP investments in this area. However, there was, they recently, MoDOT had a project along this part of 40, the installed curbs and added sidewalk. And we'll see those in the pictures. Regarding the review criteria. The conformance with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan envisions this area as residential neighborhoods. The conformance with the requested zoning with any adopted neighborhood subarea plans. There are no recent subarea plans for this area. The compatibility of the proposed zoning with the zoning use of nearby property and including any overlay zoning. The surrounding area along US Highway 40 is almost entirely C2 General Commercial, changing the zoning so that the entirety of the property is C2 is compatible with the other properties along the highway. Four, the compatibility of the proposed zoning with the allowed uses with the character of the neighborhood. The character of the neighborhood, or the character of the surrounding area is commercial, particularly along the highway. The suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted under the existing zoning. Prior to being vacant, this property was a commercial property with an operating restaurant. This property has had a history of commercial use going back to the 1960s. The length of time the subject property has remained vacant as zoned. Prior to the demolition of the building, the structure had been vacant for over 20 years. This property had been vacant, has been a vacant lot since the demolition of the structure in April of 2021. The extent of which approving the rezoning will detrimentally affect nearby properties. Rezoning this property to C2 will not have a detrimental effect on nearby properties. If anything, the effect will be positive. Then number eight, the gain, if any, to the public health, safety, and welfare due to denial of the application as compared with the hardship imposed on the landowner, if any, because of the denial of the application. The mixed use, or the mixed zoning on the property is a barrier to development of any kind, commercial or residential. Denial of the rezoning will prohibit this property from being developed for any use. If the property is not rezoned, it will remain a vacant lot. So I took some photos of the property. This is face, this is kind of standing near 40 Highway, facing northwest, looking across the property. This is kind of the opposite perspective, facing southeast, looking across the property. And those buildings kind of in the background are along 40 Highway. So this is looking north along 36th Street. You can see the apartments that I had mentioned earlier, along the north and west side. This is looking northwest across 36th Street. There's the office space. This is looking kind of at the corner of 36th and 40, looking west down 40. And you can see the new sidewalk that MoDOT installed. This is looking across the street, across 40 Highway. This is facing south, looking across US 40 Highway. This is a motel that's across the highway. Here are some of the other businesses facing southeast, looking across 40. This is facing east, looking down 40, and you can kind of see, again, the sidewalk and curbs that were installed by MoDOT. This is another angle, looking kind of into the property. You can see it's obviously a vacant lot. And this is that Health, Alliance Health or business that's across 36th Street. So staff recommends approval of this zoning request.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff before we bring the applicant forward?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So staff, you guys recommend us, even though it is our major plan says to make it residential, so you guys are still recommending approval because you think it's just a belighted property?
So we are recommending approval, just because it's, it's given the location along the highway and the other surrounding land use, it's unlikely that this property would be developed for a single-family residential. So that as an alternative to remaining a vacant lot, you know, C2 does seem like a reasonable land use for the property.
Okay, the next question I have on 36th Street, are those apartments zoned R12? Are they zoned R6, or are they zoned commercial?
They, those apartments are actually zoned R30 PUD.
R30 PUD.
So high-density.
Okay, so they are zoned correctly then.
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything else around there not conforming to codes?
There are, if you can see on the map, I don't, you can see kind of that straight line. I don't know if you can see the property lines very well back there, but there are some other lots that where the, that have mixed zoning in the area.
Okay. So the hotel next to it, is it zoned commercial too, all the way back then? And probably has residential at the back corner, what you're saying?
Correct. The hotel next to it also has this mixed zoning with...
So if that property ever lost their license, would they have to have it rezoned to open back up?
If they lost their license for a period of six months or greater.
Six months or greater.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question of staff.
Yeah.
So this, this drawing is just like a preliminary thing. It's not anything that they're actually going to go with, correct?
So we've been in, in talks with them, you know, talking with them about the site plan and what their intentions are, but yes, they have not finalized anything yet. That's not necessarily exactly what's going to go in. They still have to go through the engineering process and confirm that with our transportation engineers and the rest of our staff.
Okay. And will that come back before us, or does that just go directly to council?
It's, for this project, the site plan approval is administrative, I believe, is that correct, Warren? Yeah. So it's, will just be handled by city staff.
Then just a comment. It seems like kind of a small lot to fit this on. So that's my comment. You don't have to, you don't have to say anything about it.
Okay, okay.
Just my comment.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? All right, will the applicant come forward, please, and state your name and your address?
Short microphone.
[laughing].
Martin Arling, Cow Valley Engineering, 8040 North Oak Traffic Way, Kansas City, Missouri, and representing Capital Growth Buckhalter. What we're here for tonight, and you kind of hit on this, was the site plan, but this is strictly just a rezoning. It's got nothing to do with Dollar General at this point. It's merely fixing a zoning issue where the zoning is, you know, two parts zoning on one lot. So the area is obviously intended to be commercial, you're on a commercial corridor. It's mostly zoned commercial right now, and I think, you know, just to clean up the zoning, we're asking for approval for C3. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Do you want to state your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Wes Epperson. I'm the organizer of the Southwest Independence Community Improvements Committee. I have an article here...
Could you say your address?
Yeah, 3600 South Poplar Avenue. I'm about a quarter of a mile from this location. And I'm about a half a mile from another dollar store that's been on 35th Street and 40 Highway for several years. And I have an article here I'd like to pass out amongst the members if I could. The title of the article, this was written by CNN, "Dollar General Shareholders Vote to Review Safety Policies After Forty-Nine Deaths in a Decade at Dollar General Stores."
And I'm happy for you to pass these out to us, but just as a note, that our lane is zoning only. So while we can talk about it, we can listen, that is our lane.
Well, any zoning change of this property that leads to a Dollar General store is only going to lead to more blight on 40 Highway. It's unfortunate that the photographer at the Community Development Department did not take a straight-in picture of the budget motel that sits right next door and all the homeless people that hang out. We could all go over there now, there'd be all kind of activity in front of the budget motel and pedestrian traffic across 40 Highway from the homeless camp down behind the liquor stores that come across 40 High. In fact, just a few months ago, we had two pedestrians hit there and one killed. So you're just going to lead to more safety problems and crime problems. The Independence Police Department is there a lot at the budget motel, and what we're going to do is just create another magnet for these kind of people in this area. So, you know, we're disappointed that the person that bought the historic building that was on the national registered did a little bit of work on the property and then basically just... then basically just walked away, left it unfenced, not protected. The homeless were in there, and they finally burnt the place down. We lost a, a fine historic building there. Now we've got a lot with, that the owner has done nothing with. Modot used it during their project to store their construction material. It's full of brush, trash. There's been, as far as I know, I don't know if there's been code enforcement with the owner, and I'm supposing that the owner is still Mr. Woodruff. Does that, anybody know? Okay. Well, I looked on Jackson County Parcel Viewer. Mr. Woodruff is the one that formerly owned that property. And so, our, you know, the neighbors are concerned. Number one, our concern is just the saturation of Dollar Stores in the city of Independence. I Googled Dollar Store, and within five miles, there were eighteen Dollar Stores within five miles of this same location that they're wanting to add another one. Like I say, just not even a half a mile up Forty Highway, there's another Dollar Store there, different chain. It's been there for probably five, ten years. I also Googled convenience stores within five miles of this, this site. It, there was a hundred. And Dollar General was also on that, they were listed also as a convenience store. There are homes, and by the way, behind the strip where they had to notify the business owners to, just to the east is where the Budget Motel is at. They're not going to be opposed to Dollar General. It'll help feed the people that hang out there at their motel. And the apartments behind are bli, they're blighted. One of them's boarded up. So I don't think those landowners, look at their property, look at their apartment building. Again, they don't care if there's a Dollar General, but it's the residents of that area, just a few hundred blocks up, a few blocks up the street. There's residential, nice nineteen forty, fifty, sixties, two and three-bedroom houses that have been there for a long time. There's also Nativity Catholic Church and School, which is the only Catholic elementary school. They're quite concerned. That's where we have our neighborhood meetings, is at Nativity. By the way, we'll have one Thursday, if you guys want to come, and hear what the neighbors think about your plan, or your approval of that area for a Dollar General Store. I don't think you'll find anybody there that does. Nativity's quite concerned because of their elementary school, the clientele that hang around the motel, that walk around the, the kids out in the playground. In fact, that's why they're, they always got the doors open when we want to have a neighborhood meeting, because of their concern. Modot spent over $2 million improving the north side of Forty Highway. Again, if, Independence is spending money putting up streetlights. We're going to start working on trying to get a CID on Forty Highway. I don't think this Dollar General and the client, it's not going to benefit. You know, if, if there was any benefit to it at all, then I wouldn't be opposed. But there's no benefit. There's no benefit to the neighbors. We've got two grocery stores, one on, that just opened, Blue Ridge Cut Off and, and Forty Highway. We've got a brand-new Aldi's down at the other end. We got probably five or six convenience stores between Blue Ridge Cut Off. We got several nice eating places. And we, you know, we've got plenty of places already. The city's saturated with convenience stores. We had, there was an article in The Examiner on Saturday, February the 10th, "When a Dollar Store Comes to the Neighborhood: Dollar General." Nothing, very little positive, unless you live out in a rural area, and you're twenty-five or thirty miles from a Walmart, then that's where a lot of these Dollar Generals go in, is out in these rural areas. But just a couple of years ago, they celebrated their nineteen thousand store that they built in Joplin. So there's plenty of them around. I also seen today, Independence targets predatory lending, where they've limited the short-term loans. They put different stipulations on them to get rid of some of those. I think it's time for the city council to put a mandate out against any more convenience stores in Independence, at least Dollar Stores. And I'll close with this. Dollar General Problems from Google. What's the Dollar General lawsuit in Missouri? "Missouri Attorney General Sues Dollar General Claiming Unfair and Deceptive Pricing," September 13, 2023. "Why Dollar General Might Be the Worst." They may be the worst retail job in America. Rat infant stations, blocked fire exit, expired kids' food, machete wielding and watermelon throwing shoppers, and other nightmares at the biggest dollar chain in the U.S., September of '23. I believe that was from Bloomberg. "Why Are General Dollar Stores So Messy?" Because they don't hire enough people. I went to a Dollar General over the weekend just to look at one, one of those in Independence. One person in the store. The aisles were blocked with merchandise. I walked around the perimeter, filthy, filthy store. And you want to bring this to our neighborhood? No, thank you. We're against it.
Can I ask you one question before you leave? Are you against zoning the plot commercial? Or are you just against what goes-
I'm against anything that's going to keep Dollar General or any other convenience or whatever. I would rather have the lot cleared and have it as a green space than have another Dollar Store that, like I said, we're saturated. We don't need another. We have one right up the street. So if you have a decent occupant that would come in there and make a proposal, we could get behind that, but we can't get behind this one. This is just going to add more blight, which is why we put our people together. We have a hundred and forty people on our contact list. We've been in business for two years. We're wanting a CID on Forty Highway, and I don't think-
You're against zoning, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're against zoning this commercial?
I am. As long as it'll keep the, these plans out, I'm against it, yes. And I believe there probably are other people in our group that would, that feel the same way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against it, against this case? Come on up. If you'll state your name and your address, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kerry Cleefoth. My home address is 3620 Poplar, close to the vicinity as we're speaking of. I am in disagreement with-
Can I closer, please?
I am in disagreement with the zoning effort that's being, that's being put forward. I feel as though that it's owing to be pursuant to a larger fight down the road. So I concur with, with my fellow speaker in all regards to stopping the change of the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against this? Hearing none, would the applicant like to come forward and maybe respond to some of the concerns?
Again, as I stated before, this is a rezoning only. It has nothing to do with general Dollar at this, at this point, or Dollar General at this point. So I can't really speak to ninety-nine percent of what he talked about or what was discussed, because this is creating a C3 slash residential zoning into a C3 zoning. It's really not changing the zoning designation very much. And as staff pointed out, nothing can be developed there until this is fixed. So the only thing that logically works there is, is, is the commercial zoning. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I just want to clarify, it's, to C2.
That's why I-
I'm sorry, C2. Yeah.
Didn't have my notes with me.
One other question I'd like to ask you is, are you looking at any other applicants, maybe, to take over commercial-wise besides Dollar General at this time that you know of?
No.
Are you just a general contractor?
No, we're ultimately working for the developer for, for Dollar General, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I want. No, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? Would you like to speak against this case? Come on up. State your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Chris Sebick, and my address is 1314 West Twenty-Fifth Street South, here in Independence.
You can move that down to the next level if you want to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so I agree. I would like that not to be rezoned. And I think it would be great if we left it green space. Perhaps we could discuss putting in community garden, or, you know, something along those lines. And I also had a question. If this does pass zoning, I know you mentioned that it would just be staff that would be kind of deciding here on out. Are there any avenues for community members to be opposed to this particular thing? Is there something on down the line that we as a group can look into if this does pass and get rezoned?
Your, yeah, your, your path would be city council. That's where this discussion is really a better format.
Mm-hmm.
Because they will decide on the merits of the business and how they feel like it will mesh with what we have in Independence. Our only job is rezoning. So we really can't comment on the actual business.
Yes.
We can ask questions about what they're going to do with signage. We can ask questions about parking. We can ask those type of things, traffic studies. But for the merit of the type of business that goes in, we don't really have a whole lot of say.
Yes.
Council does.
I understand that, but from what I understood from what you said, it was not going to go to council. Is that correct?
Are we talking about the rezoning app? This is.
Not the rezoning. I'm talking about actually the, the businesses that are going to be proposed.
Yeah, it's administrative process for the, the site plan and also for the building permit review. And there would not be anything going to council specifically, unless there is some sort of liquor license, liquor license or something.
My opinion, my opinion, what you're saying, Brian, that once it get passed for zoning, if we pass this, it's still got to go to city council and get city council's approval for, for, for zoning. But once it's reapproved for zoning or not approved at council, that's it. If, if it's approved for C2, then they just do a building permit, and that's it. We don't get to look at it. Nobody gets to comment on it, just staff.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
If I can just further explain, so there are certain land uses that are allowed by right in certain zones. So if the zoning is corrected, retail sales, which Dollar General would fall under, isn't allowed by right in C2 districts. So that's why it wouldn't, the, the plan wouldn't need approval from the city council, because it's-
So this one is not going to council?
The site plan is not, no. But the rezoning, of course, is.
Yes. Okay. Yes.
Can I ask one-
Sure, come on up. You'll state your name, just to get, for the-
Yeah, okay. Wes Epperson.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's kind of disingenuous to say that I'm here and I'm working for Buckhalter, and, you know, we're doing this site plan or whatever, but it doesn't necessarily concern a Dollar General. Yes, it does. Everybody in this room knows that we're talking about Dollar General. And if this is the means that we have to go about stopping another Dollar Store right next to a problem, three or four problem properties, right at this area, you're not going to develop anything with the problems that's going on with the motel, the stadium inn where a guy got shot just a few months ago in a drug deal and killed. You're not going to do anything with a homeless camp that's actually in Kansas City, that sits right behind the, the city line of Independence on the south side, and you have a continuous stream of homeless people. This is going to be their store. You're going to have all kind of problems at this store. And I don't understand why you can't see what's going to happen. This is going to be a problem. We got enough of a problem with that motel. You go over there right now, and you didn't take any camera shots straight on into the Budget Motel. Why? You didn't see all the homeless people that hang around there all day, all night? To me, I think that's disingenuous. You got the Budget Motel, don't show the side of it. Go take the shot from the back where all the merchandise is always back there that they're pilfering from everybody, that has code complaints continuously. And we've had health department complaints in there also. So let's don't be disingenuous. Yeah, this is a zoning thing, but we would rather have it just clear the lot off and sow grass, keep the grass mowed, let the property owner, the same guy that bought it, and then didn't do anything to stop the, the historic house from getting burnt down? That's on him. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Were you sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, stood up.
Can you state your name and your address?
My name is Phyllis Zeidovart, and I live at 1310 West Twenty-Fifth Street.
Thank you.
This is another aspect of that general store that they're, you're talking about. I'm a crafter, and also I do work for a living. And I have to take my tax dollars to another city, because I am so afraid of going here in Independence. So my money, and so many others, are going to another city, another town, where there's not that mu, much of problems with the homeless. So we're losing our tax dollars for Independence because of that. That's all.
Thank you. Appreciate that comment. I'm assuming you're speaking against. Come on up.
I don't want to be on this topic, because we're-
There's a bride and groom. If you'll state your name and address, please.
Dorothea Cleefoth.
Thank you.
3620 Poplar Avenue, and I live close to it. I drive up and down Forty Highway every day. The amount of street people that are walking across Forty Highway is awful. I went down the other night three times. They walk right in front of traffic. They don't care. We don't need another commercial property in this area until we clean up Forty Highway. We have used car lots that are not, I never see anybody there buying cars. The motels, the homeless, we drive down by Budget Motel to get onto Forty Highway. They walk right in front of you. They don't care. So why would we want this zoned commercial for a property and have more traffic, more dangerous crossing Forty Highway in a car? And it's, it's not, we need to clean up Forty Highway before we think about putting in another business. The homeowners, you can't even, you know, they put that beautiful sidewalk. People are scared to walk on it. You can't even walk on it because of the homeless and all of the blight. So we would not like this zoned commercial, especially until you get Forty Highway cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would, yes, come on up. Just state your name and your address, please.
Yes, my name's Jim Daniels. I live at 10600 East Thirty-Fifth Terrace. I agree completely with Wes on the zoning issue. I agree completely with Wes on the zoning issue. Also, there's another danger that hasn't been actually mentioned yet, and there's a school right up the street from where this is at. This school has been broken into numerous times, they've had to call the police numerous times because these people are hanging around the school ground. This, this is gonna, as Wes said, this is going to draw more and more and more of these people, it's going to make things more convenient for them, and we don't need anything to attract them, we would like to see 40 Highway developed in a responsible way, where it could be, it's kind of the gateway to Arrowhead, actually, and it's, I would think that anybody in city government would be ashamed to, to have out-of-town people drive down that road, so I'm against it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak against? Would you like to respond, the applicant like to respond? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any, would you like anybody else to come back up? Any questions you have before I close the public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and we can discuss amongst ourselves. As to have any other questions.
Madam Chair. Yeah, Madam Chair. So again, staff, the master plan calls for this to be residential, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that, thank you.
Well, I guess I'll say something if you all aren't going to. I, I'm uncomfortable in like 12 different ways right now. My gut at first was that it's an obvious commercial zoning, but when you do think about the potential and how close it is to Arrowhead and knowing what is coming down the pike, and what Dorothea said, really, he got me, because I have seen the pedestrians cross 40 Highway from that hotel when I'm driving, and that is very scary, and if we put something there, doesn't matter what it is, that traffic is going to go over there. It's going to increase, and that's my concern, is that we are almost putting the cart before the horse, and maybe we need a minute more to think about this property before we feel, before I'm comfortable zoning it to commercial, I just feel like we need a, I know it's been sitting there forever, I get it, but, and I know nobody's going to develop it right now, but we may be on the cusp of something, so I don't want to, I'm just not ready to zone commercial.
Madam Chair.
Yes. He was first. Yes.
I was wondering if we could take like a five-minute recess?
Sure.
So that we can talk among ourselves?
I don't think we can do that.
You're talking right now, that's all you got.
Okay, well then I'll say, then I'll go ahead and go on the record. I have same concerns about Dollar General, that's what I was going to talk about. I think, I think we need to think about these stores like, we have thought in the past about used car lots, about car washes, the observation gentleman made about how many there are in this location, I have also made. I go around town to several places just to do what I do, and some of the sites, some of their sites are not kept like they ought to be, and they do get violations, and they don't seem to care. So, in my opinion, I think we probably ought to delay any zoning changes until some of our city leaders have a time to think about if it's time to do something about, you know, these stores, and just make sure that they're not in such close proximity to each other. Okay, so?
Madam Chair.
Out in the open.
Yes, Commissioner Wiley?
The thing that went through my mind, the easy answer was, we've got the wrong zoning, we need to fix the zoning, like, we need to do the right thing, you know, to a rule, to a book, to a law, to an ordinance, but this is a time when doing the right thing could be so much bigger, because I do see a future for 40 Highway. I see a future for development, I see an opportunity that if we choose today wrongly, just because on paper it's the wrong zoning, then we're really setting ourselves up to potentially stop future plans. That could be really great for this area, and so I'm going to vote no on this change.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Wiley?
I'm just going to add, what a shame it is that we lost that beautiful building. It's a shame. We have to, this is, we have to do better.
Yep. All right, are we ready for a motion, or?
Maybe I could ask a question?
Yeah.
Everybody's intimating to something happening along that corridor, I'm not sure that I know what you're talking about. So is it something that's in the future, or is it something that's in the wings, or?
Well, our resident Wes had mentioned that they're going to go for a CID.
Yes.
But I think in addition, with the announcement today of the Royals, that we're looking at an opportunity for the Chiefs, and coming off of a three-peat next year, I think there's nothing but high hopes for City of Independence in that area. It's been blighted for some time, and this is the time to start thinking about it, spending money there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the city is focusing some effort on 40. Obviously, the Hunts have bigger plans for the Red Kingdom area, and so we have some things to look forward for, forward to, we have FIFA coming up, we've got, you know, some things that we really, if we get in gear, that is, the 40 Highway is ripe for, yeah.
When I reviewed the proposal for this rezoning, I had the same feeling that you had about it in regard to economic development for the area. I saw vacant lots sitting there with not being used, and a business proposing to fill that lot and bring economic development to the area. But since, since you've come forward and spoke against it, I've changed my opinion. I think that, that I would vote no on it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve, case 24-100-03, rezoning 9800 East 40 Highway.
I second.
Thank you. Then we're ready for a vote.
Was that Heather that seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ashbaugh?
No.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
No.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
No.
And Chairman McLean?
No. Case number 24-100-03, rezoning for 9800 East 40 Highway, has been denied. Thank you for your voices, this is one of those moments when it is really good to hear both sides, and to have a well-educated, well-rounded understanding, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, I think for your-
I think I'll soldier through.
Okay, next case is case number 24100-07, rezoning of 210 East College Street. Did I get the right number this time?
Yes, I believe so.
Yay.
Yeah, that's all. Okay.
We're ready for a report.
Okay. As you mentioned, this is case 24107, and it's to rezone to R6 Single Family Residential. The applicant is Ashley Abbott with Lee Summit Real Estate. The action is to rezone from C2 General Commercial to R6 Single Family Residential. And you can see on the map, this is kind of, has some frontage on Nolan Road, but the building is on College, and it's just a few blocks to the north of us. Here is a map showing the notification area, all the properties in the light red were notified of this hearing and the application for rezoning. And again, you can have a better look at the, kind of the odd shape of the property with Alon College and Nolan. Here's an aerial photograph of the property. And this is the current zoning map of the area. So all that property east of Dodgen is, or, sorry, west of Dodgen is, and north of College is zoned C2 General Commercial, and there's some R6 and R12 and I1 and C1 nearby as well. But yeah, it's just kind of a mix. So the background. The property is located within a C2 zoning district, the structure has been vacant for many years, the owner intends to rent the property as a single-family residence, this is not allowed in the current zoning district. Additionally, in the event of a total loss, the existing structure could not be rebuilt for residential purposes. The property owner, in their effort to refinance their loan on the property, have found it difficult to do so because of the current zoning. The applicant seeks to have the property rezoned to R6 Single Family Residential to match his intended use. If the property is, if the rezoning is approved, the applicant will have an easier time refinancing the existing loan. The property history, the property was platted in 1887 as part of the Gates Park Platte. The age of the existing structure is difficult to determine, but has been on the property for many decades. The property was originally designated as C3 Commercial in 1965. The Firefighters Union owned the building for many years and used it as their union hall. When the latest version of the UDO was adopted in 2009, the property remained C2 General Commercial. Prior to the purchase, prior to the purchase, the current, the building had been vacant for many years prior to the current owner purchasing the property. The physical characteristics of the property. The property is a somewhat unusual shape that wraps around the Church's Chicken property, and has frontage on both College Street and Nolan Road. An unpaved driveway connects the two frontages. The second paved, second paved driveway lies to the east of the building off College Street. The building on the property is a tan color with a white trim, it does not have a typical residential home appearance, and sits just a few feet from the right-of-way. The rear of the property is primarily open space filled with grass. The characteristic of the area, while there are some commercial buildings and industrial, and in industrial zone to the southeast, the overall character of the area is that of an older, single-family neighborhood. With that said, there are some commercial and industrial uses nearby. The property abuts Church's Chicken to the west, and a car wash that is no longer operational sits to the southwest across College Street. Analysis. Consistency with the strategic plan. Rezoning this property is consistent with the Independence For All Strategic Plan, one of the objectives of the plan is to stabilize and revitalize neighborhoods. Rezoning this property to R6 will ensure that the neighborhood remains a stable, single-family Comprehensive Plan Guiding Land Use Principles. The Comprehensive Plan envisions the future land use of this property and the surrounding area to be residential neighborhoods. One of the guiding principles outlined in the Comprehensive Plan is to foster redevelopment opportunities within the city to revitalize unused or underused property. The property has been vacant for many years, but the rezoning for residential purposes will allow for land uses that are in line with the proposed future land use outlined in the Comprehensive Plan. Zoning. Section 143002 of the Unified Development Ordinance outlines the purpose of the Independence' zoning districts by stating that they are intended to create, maintain, and promote a variety of housing opportunities for individual households to maintain the desired physical character of the existing neighborhoods. By rezoning this property to R6, the city can ensure that any future use or development of this property will be in line with the single-family character of the area. There are no historical, apparent historical or archaeological sites located on the property, all utilities are present, and there are no CIP investments in the area. Now for the review criteria. Number one, the comprehensive, or, sorry, the conformance of the requested zoning with the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan envisions this area to be residential neighborhoods. Number two, the conformance of the requested zoning with any adopted neighborhood sub-area plans which the property is located or abuts. There are no recent neighborhood or sub-area plans for this area. Number three, the compatibility of proposed zoning with the zoning and land use of nearby properties, including any overlay zoning. The surrounding area is almost entirely zoned for commercial or industrial uses, however, many of the properties in the area, particularly, particularly east of Nolan Road, are single-family residences. The zoning may generally be incompatible with the surrounding zoning, but it is compatible with the actual land use of the neighborhood. Number four, the compatibility of the proposed zoning and allowed uses with the character of the neighborhood. The existing character of the neighborhood is that of a single-family residential neighborhood. Rezoning to R6 Single Family will ensure the character of the neighborhood is retained. Number five, the suitability of the subject property for the uses to which it has been restricted under the existing zoning regulations. With the current zoning in place, single-family homes are not permitted. The existing home, or building on the property is currently legal non-conforming, the property is much more suited for single-family homes than commercial uses. Number six, the length of the time the property has been, remained vacant as zoned. The property has been vacant for nearly two decades. Number seven, the extent to which approving the rezoning will be, have a detrimental effect on nearby properties. Rezoning the property to R6 will not have a detrimental effect on nearby properties, if anything, the effect will be positive. Number eight, the gain, if any, to public health, safety, welfare due to denial of the application as compared to the hardship imposed on the landowner, if any, because of the denial of the application. Denial of the rezoning will likely mean that the property remains as-is and make it difficult for investors or homeowners to clean up the property. Okay, for the pictures, this is facing north, looking at the property, this is the, the primary structure on the, on the property, and you can see it does sit very close to the street, to College Street. This is facing northeast, looking at the adjacent property. That home is also in a C2 zone, but is clearly a single-family residence. This is looking east, looking down College Street. This is facing southeast, looking across the street. This is facing south, looking directly across the street, more single-family houses. This is looking directly across College Street, and you can see the, the abandoned car wash, or the non-operational car wash there. This is facing west, looking down College Street, towards Nolan Road. And this is facing northwest, looking across College, looking at the Church's Chicken that abuts the property. So this is the other frontage, this is from, this is the, on the, the frontage that is on Nolan Road, facing east, looking into the property.
Is that a driveway, or are we just talking to grass?
The driveway does appear to cut through this area, yes.
Okay, so the, is that blacktop, or?
Uh, it's, I believe it's gravel.
Okay, so, the fence is not part, the fence and trees are not on the property? I'm just going off this picture here.
Yeah, the fence and the trees are the Church's Chicken property.
Church's Chicken, okay.
This is kind of from the same exact spot, just turning to face northeast, looking at the adjacent property. And this is facing north, looking, looking up Nolan Road. Again, this is from kind of the same exact spot, just turned around, facing south, and you can again see the Church's Chicken sign. And staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. I did want to bring your attention, yesterday, a gentleman who owns the property just to the north, actually, it's these properties in this picture, brought in a letter that I passed out, that he's opposed to this rezoning. And he indicates that in his letter. I just wanted to mention that.
Madam Chair, should they read the letter so that it's on record, so that people can hear it?
Um, do you, do you want me to read the letter? Would that, since we have no one here, or is that?
Uh, I mean, either, either, anything works for me, whatever you would prefer.
We'll do that during the.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Staff, do you have any, do we have any questions of staff?
Oh, Madam Chair, one other question here for staff. Uh, you say it's abandoned right now, is that correct, or nobody's living there?
The property has been vacant. I believe, perhaps the property owner may be able to answer, from what I can tell, I believe no one's living there.
Because their application says they've been using it for six years, so that's why, yeah, so that's why I'm trying to figure out what's happening. So we'll make sure we get a question.
That application may have been from an earlier draft.
Okay, well, we'll let the.
Is that on the, on the staff report, or the application?
That's from Lee Summit Real Estate Investment Group. It's a letter that's with the application or something.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's in our packet.
Yeah, it's in our packet. That's just questioning.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions before we bring the applicant forward? Okay, will the applicant come forward, please, and tell us your name and your address?
My name's Ashley Abbott. My address is 601 Northeast Applewood Street, Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you.
And I bought the property from the previous owner. He had said he bought it six years ago with intent to live there. And I know he fixed it up. I don't know a lot more details. That's probably that letter he had signed for us, maybe, about that. But currently, I do have a tenant in there. Originally, when I talked to the city, they said that it could be grandfathered for whatever use it was prior. When I bought it from the previous owner, he had said that, you know, he had owned it and not used it commercial at all. And I've been trying to refinance it as a single-family. It actually, it touches at least three single-family residences, even though they are zoned commercial. They are regular homes, as, as you can see. I would be curious to hear the letter from Felix, the neighbor that owns the five houses right there on Nolan. I would, I would hope that he'd want that to also be residential. I, I own about thirty other houses in Jackson County. I'm a good landlord. I try and take good care of the property. This house particularly, it has a new roof, new siding, new windows, new flooring, new packs, new 200 amp service. It's a two-bedroom, one-and-a-half bathroom with a new kitchen. Almost all of that was that when I bought it, and with intent to get it converted to residential. We do have a, a one-year tenant in there. It's rented at thirteen hundred dollars a month. I think it would be great to get this as residential. There's definitely a housing shortage as it is, I feel. And so, um, if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, but I really hope we can get this switched over and help me get some long-term financing. Right now, I'm in a hard money loan at thirteen and a half percent. So I might have to sell it if, you know, if I can't find a recourse.
Any questions of the applicant?
I have a question.
Um, if you'll notice in the picture that's showing on the screen behind you there, there's a driveway with a van parked in it. When I went out and surveyed this property, I didn't see another driveway going all the way into Nolan Road. All I saw was lawn. So my question is, is that a shared driveway?
That driveway is, is on my property. I didn't see any memorandums or right-of-way on the title. I was gonna speak to Felix, the owner, about that because there is a driveway space on the left side of that house. I'm okay with them utilizing that, as long as they're not parking in that potential right-of-way.
So that driveway is part of the property?
Yes, that is on the property. It has two entrances, is from Nolan Road with curbs. And there's also a driveway on College as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Come on, state your name and your address, please.
Sadie Redmond, 1325 South Osage Village Drive, Independence, Missouri 64056.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can move that mic down.
Short people props.
Yeah, it is it.
Is this better?
It's a thing.
Okay, so, um, I am a real estate agent in the area, and I'm actually here for my own case. I just wanted to speak on this one a little bit. I think that if the new zoning was to be denied, and he did have to list it for sale because he can't refinance it, even if he lists it for sale, the new owner's not gonna be able to do anything with the property anyways unless they were to add another business there. So I just wanted to add that. And then also that, um, the homeless population in that area is pretty high there, too, just like kind of Forty Highway and that Church's Chicken area, the Apple Market over there. So I think that if this was denied and it was to cause another vacant house to be in the area, that that would just pollute with more homeless and activity that we wouldn't really want in that area. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Yep. Do you want to read the letter? You just had eye surgery. I don't even know what I'll read. Oh, so I handed you the wrong one, straight here.
Why I, Felix Van Lewen, do not support the rezoning of 26-210-05. I think he's got the number wrong.
That's the parcel number.
Oh, got it, okay. This affects Lot 21, Lot 22, and Lot 23. Those are my properties, and the red arrow marks where the proposed rezoning will affect these lots. See page two of this packet. This proposed rezoning does affect other lots that do not belong to me. See page five. The building that sits on the address, 210 East College Street, has never been occupied as a residence that I know of. It belonged to the Independence Firemen Union at one time and was their union hall. When they moved to their current location, the property sat vacant for many years. Then it was purchased with the intent of making an event center, which never materialized, and then was vacant again from, vacant again for many years. One part of the building is at most two feet from the sidewalk. Surely, there are rules about necessary set-back feet from the sidewalk or from the center of the street for residential properties, both for new construction as well as for rezoning. See page two.
Thank you. Okay. Does the applicant like to come forward? Rebuttal. Sorry, I forgot to turn my mic on.
Uh, just speaking on the distance from the street, I agree, it is a little close. And if that were a major concern, I could make some modifications to, to close off that front door and, and close that and move the front door to, if, if we were to go to the picture of the front of the house, I have a sliding door on the right-hand side that is set back significantly. I could enclose that front door and put a French door where that slider is and make that the entrance of the house, so it would have a safer setback, at least for the entrance and exit of the house, if it, if it came to that. You know, so, but I, I am aware it's kind of close, but I'd do what, whatever we need to do to, you know, meet what, what we need on that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question of the applicant. Did I understand you right when you were talking, that the gentleman that wrote this letter was the one you bought the property from? Or not?
Oh, I, I'm not sure what that was. I, I can take a look.
You're welcome to have it.
It's a neighbor, isn't it?
It's the neighbor that owns the other properties.
Oh, oh, the letter from Felix, okay. He, he owns the four plaques and other three properties. I, I've met with him before. He's a very nice gentleman. I'm not sure.
You may have to go back to the microphone, sorry.
You can take that if you want.
Yeah.
I mean, he's got some of the facts wrong.
I, I don't exactly understand why he opposes that. I don't, um, I don't know how that would affect him with the zoning on his properties. I can, I can reach out to him and, and see if I can smooth him over on that. But I don't have any intent to affect the single-family residence that he has, or his, or his four, four plaques or anything like that. And, um, just trying to make improvements, you know, for the city as well. And it has been, I, I will tell you that the air conditioner parts have gotten ripped off of that a couple of times before I owned it and right after I bought it. And we've, we've since put some stuff up to protect that better. But I think the more that we bring a constant presence, you know, to any vacant properties, it has a less likelihood of crime or theft or anything like that. And I really think it's, it's a, gonna be a positive impact, especially the neighboring houses that touch there. There's a lot of foot traffic that moves through there, and I think with a, a presence and, and potentially getting a fence up as well and some landscaping, it's, it'll conform a lot better to the other houses.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to move for approval of rezoning on case 24-107.
Can't do that yet, we have a closing.
I gotta close the public hearing.
Sorry.
It's all right. All right, I'm closing the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion, a re-motion.
So moved.
Second.
And we're ready for a vote.
All right, Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
And Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number, um, 24-107, rezoning of 210 East College Street has passed. Congratulations. We call that cleanup in Iowa. College Street. Okay, next case, 24-403, short-term rental at 9140 East Linwood Boulevard. And thank you for your patience. Staff report.
This is a short-term rental case by Sadie Redmond, applicant. I'm looking at the vicinity map here. Actually, I should have put an X to mark the spot here, but, um, this main red line going north-south, that's Blue Ridge. And Linwood is the, um, Blue Street that parallels the Purple City limit there to the west, a block to the south there. And here you can see it's property just east of Bird Avenue. Three lots to the east. So you can see the properties within the notification area are those on the block to the north, and two to either side, and a, a large vacant parcel to the south of Linwood Boulevard. And this aerial, of course, shows what I just described, with the large vacant property of the south, and then the, the other similarly sized ranch homes around. So this is the, um, a map of the existing short-term rentals within the vicinity. The closest are a cluster down on 35th Street that existed before we had our new separation standards. And then we have one up there off of 29 Terrace, a couple blocks east of Blue Ridge that was, I believe, from two weeks ago, or a month ago, was brought before you. And then this one, of course, to the west of Blue Ridge. So here, we're looking at the floor plan for the house. You've got a two-car driveway. So, room anyway, it looks like just for two in that driveway, but I think that driveway's deeper. You could actually put four cars in that driveway, and the two-car garage. And then the three bedrooms and baths, and a kitchen, laundry facilities, living room. And this, that same diagram showing the fire evacuation plan. And the parking plan being the driveway for two cars and, and the garage as well. Background, the proposal. The applicant uses 9619 East 29 Terrace as their primary residence. Their intention is to rent this property on a short-term basis via websites such as Airbnb, VRBO, and Booking.com. When the property is rented, the applicant intends to stay with family and leave Summit. The applicant seeks approval by the planning commission to legally use this property as a short-term rental. As far as the property's history, the applicant seeks approval of the planning commission to legally use this property as a short-term rental. The property, the residential lot was platted in 1933. This property was annexed into the City of Independence in 1956. In 1965, it was rezoned to R1 Single Family Residential. In 1980, it was updated to the R1B designation. And in 2009, when the current vision, version of the UDO was adopted, of course, the nomenclature was changed to, um, R6. The zoning for the property has remained unchanged since this update in 2009. The applicant purchased this property six months ago to transform into this Airbnb. As far as the physical characteristics of the property, the tan brick home sits on a .31 acre lot. It is a single-story ranch home with a two-car garage and paved driveway on the east side, as we saw earlier. The house has three bedrooms, a living room, kitchen, dining room, two bathrooms, and a home office slash laundry room. As far as the characteristics of the area, northwest and east of the home is almost entirely comprised of similarly sized, uh, single-family residents and similarly sized. entirely comprised of similarly-sized uh, single-family residents and similarly-sized lots, as we saw on the aerial photograph a moment ago. Across the street to the south is a large vacant track with a line of trees about forty feet off the street. Um, the parking is a twenty-foot-wide driveway that's lined up with this two-car garage, so they can easily accommodate four vehicles, and um, as far as unruly guests and security, the applicant um, lives in the eastern Independence, although they, I probably shouldn't have said it like I did, they will be in Lee Summit. They live at that house, but when they're in Lee, they will be nearby in Lee Summit uh, to check up on it. Um, property management and booking will be handled by the applicant, uh, unruly guests will be monitored by the applicant with a minute. Um, in the event of an emergency, the applicant um, will be able to respond to issues and concerns. Um, the applicant must follow, must address the following um, topics, uh, noise monitoring, the applicant has indicated she has installed a noise monitoring device, a minute. In fact, I got an email just before the meeting that the applicant showed me she had already installed all this stuff, so. Uh, trash removal, the trash pickup is scheduled for a weekly pickup on Fridays by Ted's Trash. Uh, property listing, uh, the property will be listed on Airbnb and VRBO, and uh, business operations and security, the applicant will oversee site security and general business operations, including screening screening customers and coordinating bookings. Uh, the city's short-term rental checklist, the form was completed by the applicant covering the licensing, future inspections and insurance, onsite information, posting, and so forth. Uh, fire safety, uh, fire exa- evacuation plan has been submitted, along with the floor plans for the house, and the fire escape plan has been posted, I said she had sent the email just today, um, with a photograph. And city inspection, uh, the property has been inspected uh, by the fire inspector, uh, passed the initial um, short-term rental fire life and safety inspections, and since there are no other short-term rentals in the area, therefore, this application follows the density limitations set forth by the code. So here we are, standing on on the outside of Linwood, looking directly at the property, looking north there, and this is looking to the east up Linwood, and this is the, to the southeast, just across the street, looking at the other direction, and then down Linwood toward South Bird Avenue. Uh, recommendation, staff recommends approval of this short-term rental with the following conditions, uh, the short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article Three, Chapter Five of the city code. Uh, the occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. Uh, number two, the business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section fourteen, four-twenty of the code. Uh, number three, the maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to six persons total. Uh, number four, the maximum number of bedrooms shall be three. Uh, and then number five, the noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated, the Good Neighbor Guidelines, evacuation plan, and other notices must be properly posted prior to approval of the business license.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff before we have the applicant come forward? Okay, will the applicant come forward, please? State your name and your address again.
Sadie Davis, and my address is thirteen-twenty-five South Osage Village Drive, Independence, Missouri, six-four-zero-five-seven. So first, I wanted to make a little bit of a correction, I don't know if we maybe got mixed up with one of the other applications, our primary residence is not going to be at this Airbnb, our primary residence is at the address I just stated.
Okay.
Um, so whenever this is rented out, we'll be in our own house, so it won't make a difference. Um, I first kinda wanted to just talk about some of the opportunities that Kansas City has coming to it, and which will um, be bringing traffic to our area, like the um, Rock Island Bridge, it's gonna be the first entertainment bridge over water in our area, which is super exciting, the um, Casey Current Stadium, First Woman Stadium that we all are aware of as well, the Chiefs winning the Super Bowl is obviously gonna bring more traffic to us, the Kansas City Ferris Wheel, um, just to name a couple, I think that Kansas City's being developed in a really positive way, which is gonna bring more traffic to us, and I think that our idea for this Airbnb will um, provide a convenient and safe, comfortable place for guests to come, it's not their traditional hotel-style living, they have more privacy, they have space for their family. Um, I also think that it enchants the neighborhood's appeal, when we got this house, it was previously a rental property, you could tell by some of the things that we found inside of the house, it was not used for um, good things, I guess we could say. The outside was really ugly, the um, fence had stuff growing all over it, it it just looked nasty, we have did a complete remodel on the inside, um, brand-new kitchen, brand-new paint, carpet, flooring, cabinets, everything, it looks really, really nice, and we repainted the outside, um, so it's got a really modern sleek vibe now, um, so I think it enchants the neighborhood for sure. Um, and then, yeah, I think that's pretty much what I got, this is kind of more for like the um, the beneficial money standpoint to the city, uh, something that I also plan on doing, like I said, I'm a real estate agent, so I have a large social media presence, is for Airbnb guests, we're gonna have a welcome book there, and which is going to have um, all of the top entertainment areas, top restaurants, stuff like that, located in there, and it's gonna have a QR code to direct them to um, actual video reviews of us as a family going to eat at those restaurants, or going on the Ferris Wheel and actually providing a real review, so just kind of um, driving more traffic to our local businesses and entertainment areas that they may not have known about.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Oh, I have a question. Are you Sadie Redman or Sadie Davis?
So, I am Sadie Redman legally, we just got married last year, but uh, crazy story, I probably shouldn't even be saying this on record, none of our family knows except for our parents, um, because they're a little judgmental, and we wanna have a wedding, so we're going in April, uh, in two months to get married in Destin, uh, so by the public, I'm Sadie Davis, so don't snitch me out, don't snitch me out.
The reason I'm asking is because the applicant was Sadie Redman, and yet, the letter is from Sadie Davis.
Yes, sorry.
And I was confused.
I get a little um, confused on that still, 'cause nobody knows, so, in the real estate and public world, I'm Sadie Davis.
Thank you.
So TV, TV seven fans, this is a really good, big secret.
Yeah. Yeah, if my family finds that out, they might be pretty mad at me, but.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay, is this your first attempt at this, or have you, have you got other?
This is our first attempt, yep. This is our first attempt for Airbnb, um, we have a couple other properties going on in the Independence area as well, that um, one of them, we're planning to hold it as a long-term rental, not an Airbnb, it's just not suitable for that, um, but this will be our first Airbnb.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're good. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none, Commissioners, do you have any more questions of the applicant, or I would entertain a motion? Public hearing's closed.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I'd make a motion that we approve case twenty-four dash four hundred dash zero-three, short-term rental at four ninety-one-four East Linwood Boulevard.
I second. Go ahead. I'm not even gonna try, that was like.
I know it.
That's a photo finish.
Okay.
And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Uh, case number twenty-four dash four hundred dash zero-three has been approved. Congratulations, and again, thank you for your patience, sorry.
And congratulations.
Yep, congratulations, times two, about the thing we don't know anything about.
Is this like an air date?
Yes.
Don't worry, nobody watches it. City, city TV.
It's on YouTube.
It'll also be on YouTube.
Yes. I think we have to have Roundtable first.
I don't, I don't think we have anything, so, you can adjourn if you want.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, what is going on with the landscaping business on Twenty-third that we approved? Do you know?
My understanding is there's some engineering things that they're still working on, which is why I haven't completed my site plan.
That's good to know.
Review.
Oh, great. How do you know that? Oh, great, okay.
Do you, do you want to talk about the new housing study?
So yeah, so for next time, we are planning to do kind of a slideshow here at Roundtable to kind of talk about our housing study situation, where we're at in terms of the projects that have been approved, the um, single-family housing that's been developed, senior housing that's been approved, and the apartment complexes that have been approved, some of which have been completed, um, kind of going back to two thousand and nineteen, comparing that to what the housing study showed that we had done in two thousand and twenty. Good news is, we did get funding to do an update to our housing study, which will show us kind of an updated demand, uh, that is just starting, literally, like, we had our first meeting today on that, uh, so we won't have that information, so basically, what we'll be talking about is, you know, using the current study data, um, and then, the hope is that we have um, Lobbers Group kind of talk about the Section Eight housing and how that works, and try to fit both of those discussions into that um, presentation.
Thank you. So bring water, coffee.
Yeah, it's not gonna be real long, I mean, I'm not gonna make it real complicated, it's just.
It never are, tonight wasn't gonna be long.
Yeah, that tonight was a bit of a, didn't expect that many people, but, yeah, I, it's probably gonna be uh, maybe twenty minutes at most, and just kind of going over, uh, and we'll get copies for you guys, you can take them home, kind of look at them in more detail, I'll just go over it very briefly, uh, kind of the projects that we have going on. It's easy to forget how many you've actually approved, and how many are actually going on, and what stage they're in.
Yep.
Um, you know, a lot of these things are kind of in engineering process, they're they're in engineering approval, uh, maybe they're in construction permit, maybe they've started grading, maybe they've, you know, they've kind of waited a little bit, a lot of these, a lot of these developments are kind of looking at the uh, interest rates, trying to see where those are gonna fall, uh, before they really start taking off on some of those construction projects, so.
Okay, and I have another question slash request, um, in lieu of the first case that we had, well, the Forty Highway case, is it possible for you to send us kind of an overview of what's being dreamt about or discussed along Forty Highway? I think that if we had some perspective on what council and the mayor and city manager envision and would really like to have happen, I think that would be helpful in, when we listen to the citizens and and then just in general, making, trying to make right decisions for that area, it would, I think it'd be helpful to have some sort of guidelines or.
Yeah, we can, what I was gonna say, we can provide some of the capital projects that are proposed, and um, kind of see some of the long-range planning that that is intended in that area.
Because to Lori Dean's point, we could have derailed something big by voting.
I I just, what I can remember is, I think there was some sort of multi-jurisdictional MARK plan, Mid-America Regional Council plan, that we might wanna look at.
Okay, I think anything that you can give us would be helpful, because I just, like I said, we could have derailed something bigger if we voted yes, I know that you all wanted us to prove it, but if a dollar store went in, I don't know, I just, it could have set the tone for the rest of the neighborhood.
Could I add on to that in support? Before, long time before everything was set up like it was now, I think this planning commission would go through and have like first and second and third reviews of what was coming forward, and I understand why that was streamlined, but at the same time, uh, that first time it was on here, we'd get, we'd get information, and it's like, we'd make a comment, uh, you know, maybe it shouldn't have happened, or, but I mean, it's like questions about why are we doing this, and there was nowhere for it to go, because um, there was no, there was no venue or method to make a comment beforehand, it was just, uh, so, I would, I always thought that it would be nice to know beforehand what was going on, maybe just let us in on what's going on, and if, not that we're gonna all say anything, but at least have the opportunity to give some feedback, which hopefully would be helpful to to you folks, you know, I I realize that we would have no, that would just be feedback from us, it wouldn't be us telling you, hey, you need to do this. Does that, does that help? Understand what I'm asking for?
Yeah, I kinda, one of the things, you know, we we have a log, which we get applications, so really it kind of has more to do with the application process. When we receive an application for a project, it could be a rezoning, it can be um, any, any type of PUD or something like that, we do have that process where we go through, where we meet with that applicant, uh, and we have our pre-development meetings, and and then they basically bring forward the things that we need for a completed application. One of the challenges with that is though, we don't necessarily wanna give you something that's not complete either, because there's a lot of things that can change, uh, you know, it's not a secret, for example, that, you know, Wally's has talked about moving into the city, right? But we don't really have anything substantial to give you guys yet, it's not a completed application, so it really wouldn't be fair to an applicant to hand out information that we don't really have that's completed yet, um, and so, even if we have, you know, we can share with you the list of the applicants that we have pending, and kind of where they're at and their stage, but understand that we don't necessarily have the packets completed for you, so we don't have all that information, we don't have all the staff comments when it goes out for review, and then we get those comments responded back from the applicant, um, usually goes back and forth multiple times, usually when you get, when you guys get the case, you know, we're comfortable with it at its stage of being completed to the point where it can move on to council, and so, that's one of the reasons why you don't always see things until they actually get to you in the packet, uh, but we can always show you kind of what's coming in as far as the applications, 'cause we do keep a log of all those, we have an electronic log of all the applications that come in, but also remember that many of those applications can take weeks, if not months, to actually get to you, because maybe those applicants are changing what they wanna do, maybe the application isn't complete, uh, maybe after discussions with us or utilities, for example, they may change that plan, so that application may change, uh, and so, you know, even as like tonight, you know, there's some discussions on that preliminary plat, and we wanna make sure the applicants, um, you know, gives that time to to make any of those changes, and, so even when we think we had them done and completed, you know, sometimes things come up at the very end, so that's one of the biggest challenges for giving you information, and of course, obviously, it has to be done in a public forum, uh, when everybody's here in session, and, but you can actually contact the staff, and you know, we can kind of meet one-on-one, we have to be cautious about having a quorum, so, um, you know, if there's a, if there's something that you are aware of or have a question about, we can always talk about that as a one-on-one, as long as we don't have a quorum.
All right, I have, Rick, I have a idea, but Mitch, I don't know if it's to sunshine law or anything, so you might wanna address this, you know, you notify by mail. You know, you'd notify by mail the area, the residents in the area to that. Would there be any way at the same time to just send us an email of this is coming up next or the...
Yeah, I mean, we could, yeah, we'll, we can talk about how we want to do that. Like I said, I think we can, we can give you kind of a notice as some of the stuff that's scheduled. Always remember though, that until we actually, so we may have things scheduled for, I think we're in the second or second meeting in March right now.
Right.
Looking at April already for cases. But that's still a month and a half away, so things can change, so it may not be a guarantee that those cases will be on those dates. But we can always tell you kind of where we're at right now because we do get the applications in. They do come in on a timeline, and so there's a schedule that when the application gets submitted on a certain date, it'll go to planning commission, it'll go to council in this state, and it'll go to council for the second read on a certain date. So we can give you that information, but it's not a guarantee that that case is always going to be on that particular... Yeah, yeah, we have several, several.
Yeah, I know we have several going on. I just didn't know we have one for 40 Highway because I know it's such an issue with Kansas City.
Yeah, we have a 40 Highway corridor plan and I have to see, you know, there's, they have different dates at which those are completed, but...
Yeah, for me, it's just more about like, I don't want to mess up something that...
Yeah, I understand.
...the mayor or city planner or city manager kind of think would be a better direction. So I think that would be more my request is just letting us in on the 40,000-foot view, giving us some guardrails, I guess.
Okay.
That's it.
Madam Chair. Rick, have we, do we have permits for putting in electric vehicle chargers or there's something like that? Do we have anything like that?
Permits, you mean like in the code yet?
Yes.
Not yet.
Are we working on that?
He's been asking you.
Yeah, we've, we have been.
I mean, I just ran into some people doing one up at Gary Crossley and Liberty has them, so. And they were planning on putting in their own and all of a sudden they went to get hooked up and they found out, well, you didn't buy a permit, you didn't do permits. And I want to make sure we're not behind the...
Yeah, so anybody who's wanting to do that, they still need to get a permit because essentially it'll go through IPL if that's the parts you're talking about, yes. And any electrical work does still require a permit.
Okay.
So we're very competitive with other, other cities. We evidently, we want our stuff too. We want our electrical lookups.
So I just want, I just want to make sure we're getting that going through the code.
Yeah, and if you're referring to what I'm thinking you're referring to, it's basically in the code, what part of kind of that parking regulation, what kind of things we can include in the parking regulations that would include vehicle charging station.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're working on it. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for the greater good? Congratulations Chiefs again. I'll be watching the parade on TV, out of the corner of my eye while I'm working, but congratulations to the Chiefs yet again.
I don't know, everybody's closed tomorrow.
No. No, no, no. Shh. I can't. It's Valentine's Day. We're adjourned at 7:54. Five.